Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight at our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson, here. Bray.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Flatt.
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for a pledge of allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Scott Sampson of Rocky Mountain Ministries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this time today. Your grace and your mercy are extended to us and we need it today. We thank you for our leaders who are here. We ask you to bless each one, to bless our city. Father, to bless our country. Father, we need you and these days we ask for your wisdom. Guide us now, we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number three as a consent. Oh, before I move on, if you are here for agenda item number nine and agenda item number 15, both agenda items have been pulled from the agenda for this evening. Six will be, I'll discuss that when we get to six. So, agenda item number three is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote if any one member of the council. So does ours. Any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from July 28, 2016 budget development meeting and the July 28, 2016 executive session. B, treasurer's report. Council may wish to consider the treasurer's report for July showing cash and investments as of July 31, 2016. Joyce, good evening.
Good evening. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the treasurer's report for July of 2016. Total cash and cash equivalents represent 88 percent of the city's monies totaling $40,982,166. Total long-term investments represent 12 percent of city monies, which is $5,375,003. Total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments are $46,357,169. This amount is up $6,541,992 for the month of July. This report reflects our major remittance of property tax that we received in July. The first one comes in January and this is the second one. On the next page of my report, I discuss the change in cash and cash equivalents. I've highlighted some major receipts for the month. Idaho Department of Transportation Benton Street Bridge, $57,585. Franchise fee Idaho Power, $92,499. This amount is down 1.21 percent from fiscal year 15. Bennett County Road and Bridge, $361,648. This amount is up 69.67 percent from fiscal year 15. This is a major reflection of the increase in the highway user monies that are coming in and the increase that the county took for Bennett County Road and Bridge. And this is just our portion of that distribution that they receive. Idaho State Highway User Fees, $602,915. This amount is up 40.40 percent from fiscal year 15. This also reflects the increased legislation that made the gas tax go up 7 percent last July and this is a reflection of those increased dollars. Bennett County Tax, $9,929,121. As I said, this is the second remittance that is our large remittance and this amount pretty much has to carry you through to January of 2017. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the month. Page three of the report is on our trust funds. Total cash and cash equivalents for the trust funds are $669,285. Long-term investments total $5,819,484 for a total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $6,488,769. Total cash receipts for the month are $67,980. Total cash dispersed months for the month, it was a use of $58,970. Net change in long-term investments are $46,131 in use, for an overall reported decrease of $37,121 to the funds. Page four of the report, we report on the net, the ending cash balances for each of the funds. You'll note that the general fund is at $9,391,376 at the end of the month. On page five of the report is discussion and analysis and this is for your review. And the last page of the report is our five-year trend on our cash ending balances for all funds. As I had noted, the general fund is showing a strong position. It shows our purpose and point of increasing our reserves and getting those rebuilt and this is our highest point in the last five years. We do have two funds that are negative and those reflect grants that are pending that, because most of our grants, all of our grants are a reimbursement basis, so we spend the money and then we receive it in. So they will sit negative until the reimbursement comes in and that's just a normal status for these type funds. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Joyce?
Do you think those increase in user fees is a reflection of lower gas prices or what do you think that is? I mean, I know the 7 percent.
Yeah, well, you had the increase, the seven cents increase and that's the distribution we're receiving in. And also there was an increase in your registration fees and so that is a reflection, that 40 percent increase is a reflection of that. Plus, I think you have more traveling. Your lower gas prices encourage people to travel more, so you're probably getting a reflection of all those parts. But a large part, I would have to say, is the user fee increase, which was, the point was to help rebuild our roads. It hadn't been increased for a number of years and so that was an important thing for the state to do.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Move on to C, Human Relations Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mohamed Saftar to serve as a member of the Human Relations Advisory Committee replacing...
Debo D.
Debo D. Jodberry, who resigned Mr. Safar's term will begin August 19, 2016 and will expire November 19, 2016. D, exception request, fill the boot fundraiser. Council may wish to consider a request from Pocatello Firefighters Local 187 for an exception to ordinance, to ordinances or laws that would prevent the group from gathering funds for the Muscular Dysgraphy Association, fill the boot fundraiser, on the public rights of way at the intersection of Oak and Jefferson from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on September 9, 2016. E, exception request, run with the Big Dogs fundraiser event. Council may wish to grant an exception to City Code 12.36.030 to allow dogs in Ross Park on Saturday, October 1, 2016, for the annual, or Animal Shelter's 19th Annual Run With the Big Dogs Annual Fundraising Event. Dogs under the control of their owners will be attending the event. F, American Academy of Pediatrics Grant Police. Council may wish to approve an application to the Idaho chapter of the American Academy for Pediatrics in the amount of $11,500 for the purpose of purchasing and distributing child passenger safety seats by police staff. And if the grant is approved, authorize the mayor to accept and sign documents related to the grant. This is an annual grant and there is no city match of funds associated with this request. G, Annual Work-Study Agreement ISU. Council may wish to approve a college work-study agreement with Idaho State University ISU, providing for work-study positions at the city in the amount of $26,325 for the period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. The city is responsible for paying 40 percent of the set allocation, $10,530. This is an annual agreement and the funding for the work-study position is included in the budgets of those departments utilizing the work-study positions. H, Council Decision, East Point Hills Division Number 7 Final Platte. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the final plat for the East Point Hills Division Number 7 subdivision, which divides 3.67 acres into 14 residential subdivision, lot subdivision, zone residential medium density, single-family RMS density. Subject to conditions, the proposed subdivision is located north of Daybreak Drive, east of East Point Drive, on an extension of Hallmark Drive, and will connect the two ends of Hallmark Drive.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications and proclamations, we have no proclamations, however, we do have one scout in the audience. If you would like to stand up and tell us what troop you're in and where you're from.
I'm from Troop 342 in Idaho State.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here. Appreciate that. We have a couple of girl scouts in the crowd as well. Would you like to stand up and tell us?
I'm from Troop 38. Bray, I should have saw the picture. I'm from Troop 38. Troop 38.
Troop 38. I'm glad you speak loud because, and we're glad you're here. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On September 1st at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular council meeting. September 8 at 9:00 a.m. will be a study session. Other events, August 20 is the Ice Cream Zufari Event at 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Zoo Idaho. Mayor versus Bear Pie Eating Contest at 2:00 p.m. We're also adding a councilwoman to that Mayor versus Bear Pie Eating Contest. I just hope the bear focuses on the pie and not us. August 22.
Can be at the same table.
I don't know. I'm hoping not.
I'd buy tickets today.
I'm sure you would. I just have to run faster than her, but I don't think I can.
You're going down.
I think I am. A little bit nervous and worried about that, quite frankly. Okay, we'll move on to Welcome Back Orange and Black that I hope I'm at on August 22nd. Welcome Back Orange and Black Event for ISU Students in Old Town.
Starts at 4:00.
Starts at 4:00 p.m. at the Pavilion, Old Town Pavilion. And then, as a reminder, Community Recreation Center will be closed for the annual maintenance work beginning August 22nd. The center is scheduled to reopen on September 6 at 6:00 a.m. While the patron facility will be closed, the business offices will remain open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Please be advised at Ross Park Aquatic Complex hours will change to coincide with the start of area schools. The complex's last day of the season will be September 5. School will be starting soon, so please remember to slow down during school zones. Council, did I miss anything? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number six. Agenda item number six is a public hearing. This public hearing has been postponed to September 15. We received some information today our attorney needs to review and so we will postpone this until September 15 and you will see it back on the agenda. So we will move to agenda item number seven. Right-of-way use license BBAD Investments LLC. Council may wish to consider a request by BBAD Investments LLC for a right-of-way use license to allow retaining walls to be constructed directly behind the sidewalk on lots 24 through 28, Block 1 of Hidden Valley Subdivision, Third Edition via Valdano within the city's right-of-way. Engineering, public work staff recommend approval of the request, subject to conditions and legal department's review.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request, subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Johnston.
With conditions.
With conditions. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Resolution Establishing a Process for the Vacation of Public Rights of Way. Council may wish to adopt a resolution establishing a process for vacation of public rights of way, consistent with Idaho Code and Repelling Resolution 1998-26 and 1999-34 as they are no longer being applied to the vacation process. The resolution will become effective after its passage and will sunset upon the adoption of a revised Pocatello Municipal Code Title 17, zoning regulation, which will incorporate the process present, presented at the proposed, in the proposed resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine was pulled and so agenda item number 10, Council Select Funding Request, Southeast Idaho Homeless Stand Down. Southeast Idaho Homeless Stand Down, represented by Susan Thurm, is requesting that council select funds in the amount of $250 be used for operational cost of their annual event at Idaho State University Re-Gym on October 29, 2016. Funds raised from the event will be used to provide items that help homeless individuals, families in the community stabilize. As of August 12, 2016, $2,558 remains in the council select line item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this request for council select funds.
Second. We have a motion by Brown and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Council Select Funding Request, Pocatello Flag Design Committee. Pocatello Flag Design, Pocatello Flag Design Ad-Hoc Committee, represented by Logan McDougall, is requesting that council select funds in the amount of $250 be used to cover expenses such as banners, materials, and entry fees related to the committee's participation in the Idaho State University Homecoming Parade on September 24, 2016. The parade venue will be used to educate and inform the public of the committee's efforts to solicit designs for a new flag for Pocatello. As of August 12, 2016, $2,558 remains in the council select line item.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve this request.
Second. We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Moore. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Or?
No.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Exception Request for Beer/Wine Permit Spideal. Council may wish to consider granting a beer and wine permit to Wendy Spideal for a 40-year high school reunion at Sister City Park on August 19, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Ms. Spideal has submitted an application to the city to allow the consumption of beer and wine at the event. Approval by council is necessary since this area is not specifically identified in City Code 12.36.060 where consumption of such beverage is allowed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please?
Is Ms. Spideal here?
She is not. I was gonna ask her a question.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to know how much she planned out to consume. Guess we'll have to wait till another day.
Have to wait until after the event, find out how it went. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Exception Request for Beer/Wine Permit Blue Mail. Council may wish to consider granting a beer and wine permit to Kyle Blue Mail for a company picnic customer appreciation event at Fort Hall Replica Stage Area on August 27, 2016. From 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Mr. Blue Mail has submitted an application to the city to allow consumption of beer and wine at the event. Soon as I can get my thing to move. Got it? Approval by city council, or approval by council is necessary since this area is not specifically identified in City Code 12.36.060 where consumption of such beverage is allowed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the request.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, Temporary Road Closure Request, Kind Community ISU Homecoming Kickoff Celebration. Kind Community, represented by Courtney Fisher and Idaho State University ISU, represented by Stuart Summers, are requesting to close Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue with closure points at 8th, 9th, and 15th avenues for a Kind Community ISU homecoming event on Monday, September 19, 2016. Representatives are requesting that the street be closed 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. for the event. The city staff has recommended approval of the request with conditions.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question before we vote on this?
Depends on who you're asking.
Stuart Summers.
Sure. Absolutely.
Stuart, would you describe what's going to take place with this Kind Community event?
Yeah, absolutely. So, that week is Kind Week in the community and it's also Homecoming Week, so we thought to join the two groups together for this event. And this week, or this year's Homecoming theme is Strengthen Stripes, so we thought it was a perfect theme for kindness and bullying and also celebrating the diversity. So we'll be having a live concert, some kindness booths, a car show.
We're bringing in a speaker from Florida. He's a nationally recognized speaker for cyberbullying. He'll be a keynote speaker. That is being...
So Courtney, I'm gonna interrupt you. If you would please step up to the front here. You'll have to introduce yourself so for the viewers at home.
I'm Courtney Fisher. I am the founding director of Kind Community. Thank you very much for presenting this before the board. In addition to the event activities that Stuart mentioned, we're also bringing in a speaker. He'll be our keynote speaker. His name is Dr. Sidhir Hinduja. He is a nationally recognized speaker on cyberbullying and published author. So the whole nature of the event is bringing the community together to celebrate homecoming, to celebrate Kind Week, and let our youth and our community know that we are here to support their development in all ways.
Follow-up question, if I may. Courtney, are we making any progress in this area because of the great efforts of your committee?
I believe we are and one of the things that we are attempting to do with, working with School District 25 as well as the public, private, and charter schools in the area is to start conducting some surveys at the beginning of school during Kind Week and a follow-up survey at the end of the year so that we can start collecting some data to really evaluate the success. Though, the news that we're hearing from the school district is they are seeing a decrease in bullying incidents. Part of the problem is teaching kids what to do when these bullying incidents occur. Part of the problem, their statistics are that 1 in 4 students are bullied. A very small percentage of those students actually report it. So it's just being very mindful of what's going on in the schools and giving those kids, empowering them with the tools to deal with some of these issues that they're facing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roger.
I have a question. Have you worked with ISU itself to make sure this doesn't foul up their operations of school?
Yeah, so we've met with facilities. We have plans in place to close each of the entry points of the street and then also adjust for the traffic flow that day for school and also for the parking lots that will be affected by it.
Because it's a major, you're closing down two major arteries with Martin Luther King and 8th Street.
Yeah.
And 15th Street.
So we will keep, traffic can still turn left at Re-Gym and go up to the parking lot there. And then also there'll still be access to the parking lots by the Christianson Building, the College of Tech. And then we'll just close right at the library where there's now that one way for the block and they'll still be able to go across 8th by the Administration Building. So it's essentially just between the Rendezvous Complex and Re-Gym, but not, so cars can still go onto those side streets as well.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't having a good plan get in the way of not a good plan.
Absolutely. And the biggest thing is through the day, the traffic, the road would still be available if there was some sort of emergency or some need to get traffic through. The biggest reason we have to close it off early is we're setting up a large stage right up in front of Re-Gym on the street. And so that's the biggest impact. That's why we're asking for it. The event doesn't start until 5:00, 5:00 p.m. that evening, but we're asking to close it through the day as we're setting up the stage at the beginning, or at the top of the road and also the speaker system and things.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve this request.
Second.
With conditions, yes. With conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Or. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. 15, agenda item 15 has been pulled, so we'll move to agenda item 16. Simply Cats Adoption Center, MOA Animal Services. Council may wish to approve a memorandum of agreement, MOA, with Just Stray Animal Foundation Incorporated DBA, Simply Cats Adoption Center, a nonprofit organization, what that time? Located in Boise, Idaho. The MOA would create a coalition between the city of Pocatello and the foundation with the goal of increasing the live release rate of four cats.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve this MOA between the entities.
Second. We have a motion by Or and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Or?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17, Third Annual Splash Dance for Dogs at Ross Park Aquatic Complex, request animal services. Council may wish to consider the following requests related to the Third Annual Splash Dance for Dogs fundraiser for the Pocatello Animal Shelter. The event will be held in the Ross Park Aquatic Complex, RPAC, on Saturday, September 17, 2016. A, waive the pool rental fee of $350 per hour for entry fee and entry fee of $1.50 and B, exception to city codes in order to allow dogs in the RPAC and Ross Park during the event.
Mayor.
Councilman Or?
I move that we approve requests, more specifically items A and B.
Second. We have a motion by Or and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Or?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes. Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, Fiscal Year 2017 Departmental Fee Resolution. Council may wish to adopt a resolution with exhibits A through Z, setting fees for fiscal year 2017, October 1, 2016 through September 30, 2017. The exhibits are A, Pocatello Regional Airport Fees; B, Alcohol Beverage License Fees; C, Animal Service Fees; D, Business License Fees; E, Cemetery Fees; F, Children Group Treatment Center Fees; G, Commercial Activities in Parks and Other Public Places Fees; H, Construction Trade Fees; I, Child Care License Fees; J, Development Reimbursement Fees; K, Engineering Service Fees; L, Fire Department Fees; M, Geographic Information Service Fees; N, Parks and Recreation Activities Program Rental and Admission Fees; O, Parks and Recreation Facilities Fees; P, Planning and Development Service Fees; Q,[1765.62] Parks and Recreation Facilities Fees; P, Planning and Development Service Fees; Q, Police Department Fees; R, Public Records Fees; S, Sanitation Department Fees; T, Construction Site Sediment and Erosion Control Fees; U, Pocatello Regional Transit System Fees; V, Utility Billing Department Fees; W, Video Service Fees; X, Water Department Fees; Y, Water Pollution Control Development Department Fees; Z, Zoo Program Rental and Admission Fees.
Good thing we didn't have any more, Mayor. We ran right out of alphabet.
Well, I started thinking, am I doing the alphabet right in the middle of all of that?
Mr. Mayor, a question. Are we coming close to being self-sufficient with all of these? I know there's a lot of money that is utilized to support some things, but are we making progress towards being self-sufficient in these departments with these fees?
Well, good question, Councilman, and the, I don't know if we'll ever be self-sufficient with these fees. You'll always probably see some of the inflection of taxes and stuff like that, but as we went through the budget meetings and as we've tasked the departments, this is part of that, and we are recovering a lot of that, and so users are definitely spending, paying more for the use and not the taxpayer dollars going to it. So, I would say yes and no.
Sounds like...
Great political answer. I know.
Political answer. Thank you, though.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the rate fee structure as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Moore. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 19, Resolution Intent to Levy Foregone Property Tax for Fiscal Year 2017 Budget. Council may wish to adopt a resolution establishing the city's intent to levy $18,807 in foregone property tax for the purpose of supplementing other revenues in fiscal year 2017 to complete and the purchase of the public safety equipment for the fire and police departments. Said resolution is prepared in accordance with Idaho Code 63-802.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask Joyce to explain to the listening audience what foregone funds are, property tax money?
Absolutely.
Joyce Strachain, Chief Financial Officer. Foregone taxes, in every given year, you're allowed a 3% increase, and this year, our 3% was 807,000, which was the same as last year. If in that given year, we choose not to take the full 3%, then those dollars go into what they kind of call a bank of foregone tax. It's taxes we chose not to take in prior years. In this case, at this point, in preparing the fiscal year 2017 budget, we had approximately $1.4 million available to us in foregone tax, and we're taking a very small portion of that with just the 18,000. But it's taxes that we have refused to take in prior years that is still available to us in future years, if the need arises.
So, if a taxpayer were asking the question of whether or not we are being fair to them in terms of utilizing these funds, what would you say?
Well, in particular, in these funds, we're choosing to take these additional dollars for a one-time purpose of assisting in the purchase of our fire and police equipment, which we have not been able to purchase over the past years. These are things that have been requested time and again, and we've not been able to fund those. And with our given structure this year, we're only needing to take 18,000 in foregone tax in order to facilitate that purchase of needed equipment for your self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department and your police radios for the police department. So, it's a, to me, it's a kind of a critical thing. These are, these are equipment that you need for your, people that are working your public safety jobs to be able to function appropriately.
So, if we were being wasteful, we could have spent an additional million some dollars?
Well, you could have taken a million four, and you would have been within your rights to take that. I think it's more of a sign, when you have foregone dollars on the tax table left, it's because you're being very frugal and very conservative about how much you're trying to take. So, yes, I would agree with that. You're definitely not being overanxious to take taxes just because.
I appreciate you making that statement of our responsibility being fulfilled as a council.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to adopt the resolution. Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move into agenda item 20, an ordinance is, we have four of these, so 20A, the Annual Appropriations Ordinance for Budget Year 2017. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
The full ordinance needs to be published. Make your motion, please.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I move the annual appropriation ordinance for budget year 2017. We, the full ordinance, we understand must be published, and the ordinance is prepared for reading under the rule of suspension.
Second. We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Council, is there any discussion you would like to have here? Okay, then. We can't after that. It's for the ordinance going to pass. We've already finished it.
Yeah, Dean, just read it.
Okay. Dean, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho appropriating $112,512,274 for the 2017 fiscal year to defray all necessary expenses and liabilities of the city, providing for the objects and purposes for which such appropriations are made and the amount appropriated for each object or purpose, levying ad valorem taxes in the amount of $27,524, $524,778, which includes $18,807 in foregone property tax for the fiscal year beginning the first day of October 2016 and ending the 30th day of September 2017, upon all the taxable property within the city of Pocatello to provide revenue to pay current general, street, recreation, cemetery, airport, and public library expenses, and to pay interest and principal on general obligation bonds of the city of Pocatello, providing that a certified copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the county commissioners of Vannick County, Idaho, Power County, Idaho, and with the Secretary of State of the state of Idaho, writing for this ordinance to take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
We, just a second. We have questions and discussion.
I'd like to discuss just a minute, because I've worked and struggled with this. I have some consternation about, because we're going up 12% in the last three years, over 12% in our taxes. Lot of discussion has been around the pilot program and whether the pilot program triggered all this. I reviewed what our tax structure was in terms of levy rates prior to pilot being executed. We're 8% beyond, where the average is, prior to the pilot program. And I know that there's a huge part of our community, if I read the United Way thing, which I know some people haven't read or don't see as weighted, but that's 41% of our community struggles, struggles to make ends meet. These are working people, a segment of it, and are poor people. And I have struggled with this, struggled with it, and I just don't feel like I can vote for this budget. First time in nine budgets I voted on it, and I can't. And I know we've worked hard as a city. I don't think we have done our due diligence to address pre-pilot program. And I, I do think that we made some inroads with our employees, but I don't think we've made enough inroads with our employees. They are still far behind the curve. I think we should have done more justice to them. We're going to be catching up one more year next year, and I think we should have addressed that one. And so, I'm having, I will not vote for this. And I understand the other side. I mean, I've struggled with both sides, so.
Mayor.
Yes.
The statement's a contradiction, because in one, one statement of not being able to support the increase, yet in the second statement of wanting to make employees whole, you can't make the employees whole without increasing the dollar. So, if in fact, we had taken that initiative to make the employees whole, as you said, the levy would have gone up more. We would have, by my understanding, we would have taken more of the foregone to achieve that goal.
Well, I don't, I'm going to respond to that. Go ahead. I don't think it's a contradiction at all. I think there are mechanisms that we could have exercised in terms of a small intentional reduction of workforce that could have made employees whole. We have added people in the years since the pilot program came, came off the books, and I just, I don't think it's a contradiction. I think there were ways to resolve that, and we didn't pull the trigger on those ways. And so, that's why I can't vote for it, because I don't think we were expansive enough in addressing what the pilot's effect was. We've simply taxed and taxed to replace it without taking that out.
See, and I, I take a little bit of exception to that, because first of all, I have, this council, over the last year, has done more in the budgeting process than at any time in the time that I've been on this council, and I would dare say, many years before that. My other concern with that is you're focusing on the pilot. Our discussions also focused on the massive amount of mistakes that have been conducted over the years by the Vannick County Assessor's Office that affected our budget and took away revenue from this city. And so, not only are we talking about a lot of money being gone because of the pilot program, but also because of those mistakes that were made, and we're having to make up that deficit along with the overall economy nationwide, which government budgets, revenues are shrinking all over the place due to fewer grants, due to shrinking state revenues. I mean, it's, so it's certainly a lot more than what you're attributing. It's everything else as well that we've also discussed.
Well, I was, I was part of those discussions, too.
I know, and conveniently left some of that out.
This council and the employees of the city have worked very hard in addressing this. I just do not feel like we've gone far enough. And I, I just, there were errors made, yes, but we overcame them by raising budget a couple of times since the most major error. But if you look at the overall evaluation from which taxes are taxed, we have been stagnant. So, a homeowner is basically going to be paying $127 more on the same evaluation they had a few years ago, and I don't think we have made their house value increase. I ran a few numbers. I think we're about 194 to 274 million behind where we should be if we would have had a $2 million, a $20 million growth rate, which I think is pretty nominal, and a 3%. You just plug this in to the cost of living index, what our, what our evaluations were at one point in 2013, what they could be today if we would have kept pace with inflation. And we're behind quite a bit, and I think a lot of our citizens are behind, or we'd see the evaluations increasing. I work with a lot of poor people in different avenues, and I, I have a lot of friends and a lot of people who I know are willing to pay more taxes to help our city, but unfortunately, we cannot be selecting who gets taxed and who doesn't. And we have a lot of people, I talked to one major business person, and this is the equivalent of one employee, this year's raise, is one employee out of their business structure because of the evaluations. And they've got hit in other ways, too. Councilman Johnston.
I, I have a tendency to believe that we are, we are making such incredible progress that we should not go backwards. I know that we have to spend money to keep our city current with equipment, and we've lost so many good employees because we have not been able to keep some of them at a par. I understand that, but we're not going to be able to cut out these key positions. The mayor has given to us every employee, we've, we've talked about every employee that's needed to be replaced, and so.
I disagree with that. I get memos that say I have already authorized hiring these employees.
Because they were a critical and essential person.
That's an assessment, yeah.
And I accept that, because somebody has to make that decision, and I, I'm confident that the mayor's done the right thing in making those decisions. So, I think there is so much good, so many good things happening in the economy in our city that we must continue to provide good services, and I think we're getting ahead of the curve by, just like these foregone dollars for the police and the firemen. I, I think that's essential when we do those things.
I voted for that.
I know you did. That's good.
Anything down here? I just want to make a statement that I absolutely am frustrated with those comments, because this council has worked so hard. Our department heads have worked so hard. It's amazing how much we've done. We were put up behind the eight ball, and it's been very, very difficult to get to where we are right now, and decisions have been made, and now we, I almost feel like we have a political stance we're taking, and it's frustrating, because we've had a number, a number of opportunities to talk about this and to do this, and this has not been an easy year, not for one person on this dais here or any of the department heads. I can assure you, and it is very difficult, and this, in my opinion, is a very good, solid budget, and it's a reasonable budget, and it's one that is sustainable and one that we will continue to, to be able to build on. We have let things around the city, capital improvements around the city for decades go without doing and making improvements, and we're now in the process of making that. And so, I, I think it's a great budget. I wholeheartedly support it, and I am grateful for our council that has stood up and said, it's time for us to take care of the business that we've been elected for. And so, with that being said, we'll see how it rolls and see how it happens. I have a comment. I get to comment still. Actually, no, I'm running the meeting. I'm not going to do that. Connie, will you please call the roll? Mayor, I would like to be recognized. Thank you. You have been. Connie, will you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
No.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item 20B, an ordinance repealing Title 16 subdivision regulations and adopting an entirely new ordinance for Title 16 subdivision regulations as presented to the council at the July 14, 2016 study session and August 4, 2016 public hearing. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, agenda item 20B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Moore and a second by Moore. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you. Dean, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho, repealing Title 16 titled subdivision regulations of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello and adopting a new Title 16 titled subdivision regulations, establishing new processes for short plats, development surety bond requirements, plat recording procedures, warranty bond requirements for the protection of public infrastructure, construction, and maintenance, issuance of building permits, review of construction and development plans, property line adjustments, and other housekeeping changes in compliance with applicable provisions of Idaho statutes Title 50, Chapter 13, entitled Plats and Vacations, and Title 55, Chapter 19, recording of surveys, and Title 67, Chapter 65, local land use planning... of surveys, and Title 67, Chapter 65, local land use planning, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
Connie, could you please call the roll?
Do you want to clarify?
Oh, I'm sorry. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Now we can do something.
Now we can have the discussion, I guess. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes. Thank you. Agenda item 20C, amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic to update portions of the current code and to implement a new section regarding speed limits within construction zones as presented to the city council at the August 11, 2016 study session.
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, agenda item 20C, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication. Second.
Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Dean, could you please read the ordinance?
I'd be happy to. I'm getting a lot of airtime.
Yes, you are.
Without resorting to a legal description.
You're going to get an awful lot later on the next one, so.
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho amending sections of the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, 1983, more particularly sections 10.04.040, 10.04.060, 10.04.080, 10.04.090, 10.04.140, 10.08.040, 10.08.070, 10.08.080, 10.08.140, 10.12.020, 10.16.010, 10.16.080, 10.30.080, 10.34.020, and 10.34.030 to amend the position of quote "traffic engineer" end quote to quote "city engineer" and/or his or her designee. Sections 10.34.050, 10.34.05, 10.34.050, and 10.34.080 amending the position of traffic engineer to Pocatello Police Department, amending section 10.16.030 to allow for quote or when flashing quote "school zone" speed limit signage in conjunction with the timeframe, enacting a new section 10.16.090 entitled "Construction Speed Zone Limit" end quote to provide for authority to reduce speed limit in construction areas as applicable. Amending section 10.08.130 to incorporate a no parking zone for all of Olympus Drive from Pocatello Creek intersection to East Chubbick Road, remove Garfield Avenue from Gould Street to Bridger Street from section 10.16.040, amending section 10.16.050 to include Highland Boulevard and Kirkham Road with a speed limit of 35 miles per hour, and amending section 10.16.060 to include South Valley Road with a speed limit of 45 miles per hour, providing that all other sections of chapter 10.16 shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
Mayor, could you make sure he doesn't add levy?
Wait till the next one, I'm afraid. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes. Thank you. 20D. An ordinance changing the designated zone of 7.26 acres of property located at 1800 Garrett Way, Pocatello, Idaho from commercial general CG to residential commercial professional RCP. The council decision for this designation was adopted July 16, 2015. Councilman Orr?
I move the ordinance, agenda item number 20D, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Orr and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Ford?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Dean, could you please read the ordinance? Everybody settle in here.
Very quietly.
It's a three or four pager.
Hit the bell when it's over.
Yeah, that's right.
Pursuant to state law, when a legal description is involved in an ordinance, we have to read the legal description.
This is it. Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho changing the designated zone of 7.26 acres of property located at 1800 Garrett Way, Pocatello, Idaho from commercial general to residential commercial professional, RCP, more particularly described as follows: "A parcel of land located in the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 6 South, Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, Vannick County, Idaho. Perine basis of bearing as shown on a record of survey map, instrument number 760780 in perine, described as follows: commencing at the southeast corner of Section 22 as shown on said record of survey map, fence along the east line of said section 22 also being the center line of McKinley Avenue as shown on the aforesaid record of survey, north 0 degrees 21 minutes 0 seconds east, a distance of 254.24 feet. Fence leaving said section line, north 89 degrees 39 minutes west, a distance of 25 feet to a point on the west right-of-way line of said McKinley Avenue. Fence continuing north 89 degrees 39 minutes west, a distance of 549.72 feet to a point of non-tangency on a 1,540.02-foot radius curve to the right whose center bears north 28 degrees 57 minutes 49 seconds east, said point being the point of beginning. Fence following said curve in a clockwise direction, an arc distance of 289.78 feet through a central angle of 10 degrees 46 minutes 52 seconds, parallel width and 97 feet left of the center line of Idaho State Project Number FS 1024, Perine 6. The cord of said curve bears north 55 degrees 38 minutes 45 seconds west, a distance of 289.35 feet to a two-inch aluminum cap stamped LS 4473 being 97 feet left of Engineers Station 74 plus 40.40 of said state project center line, the tangent of which bears north 50 degrees 15 minutes 19 seconds west. Fence along a spiral curve to the right, parallel with said project center line, the tangent of which bears north 50 degrees 15 minutes 19 seconds west, a distance of 339.63 feet. The cord of which bears north 46 degrees 8 minutes 27 seconds west, a distance of 339.46 feet to a two-inch aluminum cap stamped LS 4473 being at the point of tangency of a line that bears north 44 degrees. Excuse me.
Two paper clips to hold this. It's so thick and long.
The tension is thick. North 44 degrees, 7 minutes 49 seconds west, and being 97 feet left of said project center line station 70 plus 90.40. Fence continuing along a line parallel width and 97 feet left of said project center line, north 44 degrees 7 minutes 49 seconds west, a distance of 193.21 feet to a two-inch aluminum cap stamped LS 4473 at the southeast corner of parcel number one as shown on said record of survey map. Fence along the easterly line of said parallel number one, north 15 degrees 4 minutes 7 seconds east, a distance of 287.76 feet to a two-inch aluminum cap stamped as LS 4473 at the northeast corner of said parcel number one. Fence south, 78 degrees 6 minutes east, a distance of 96.75 feet. Fence south, 89 degrees 54 minutes 24 seconds east, a distance of 241.53 feet. Fence south, 0 degrees 20 minutes 43 seconds west, a distance of 90 feet. Fence south, 89 degrees 54 minutes 24 seconds east, a distance of 212.01 feet. Fence south, 0 degrees 21 minutes west, a distance of 704.366 feet to the point of beginning. The described parcel contains 7.26 acres more or less, providing that the official zoning map be amended to incorporate this rezoning, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
Amen.
It was actually shorter than I thought. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item 21, discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the starting of this meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is a total of three minutes to do this per person and 15 total minutes for the agenda item. We'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Tason.
Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone, Chubbick. Preamble states, "We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish the Constitution of the United States of America. We pledge allegiance to the United States' flag and represent each of our republic, one nation under God and indivisible." DNC, I mean 98 states. That law of the land which is constitutional supporting that principle of freedom in maintaining rights and privileges belongs to all mankind and is justifiable before meeting God. And as pertaining to law, man whatsoever is more or less than this is evil.
Nikki, you're out of order.
How am I out of order?
According to the Roberts Rules of Order, if you would read that for us, please, so everybody in the audience and TV understands.
A member's.
Wait a minute. Are you stopping my time?
A member's speech addressing a council has no right to read from or have any paper or book as part of their speech without obtaining permission from the assembly, the governing body beforehand.
So if you haven't received any permission from the members on the dais beforehand to read from any of those things, then it is not applicable. Go ahead and start the timer.
I read Article 4 of the Constitution. The United States.
Again, you are out of order in doing so tonight.
The Constitution is the supreme law of this land, not the open meeting laws. That is constitutional law.
You are out of order in this. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and if you're not going to follow the order.
In the name of Jesus Christ, you are committing treason, and I command you to repent. God will not be modest.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, counsel, for your work today and your attendance in the meetings. We appreciate.
The voice of this people.
We appreciate your time. We are adjourned.